Tom Muller.
Here.
Jeff Peterson.
Here.
Lee Schatz.
Here.
I'm here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At the conclusion of this evening, open session, the board may adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five, current law, if need for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business will never be intended for bargaining reasons to require a closed session. More specifically, this evening, we will be considering master agreement contract negotiations. The board may reconvene into open session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five, current two, if necessary, to act on considerations given during the executive session. First item on the agenda this evening is student and special guest presentations. We do not have a presentation, and I see we do not have a student representative this evening.
And I'm not sure what happened. I did not hear from either one of them. And so if in ten or fifteen minutes they don't show up on the right side of the table, you can scritch around a little bit and have a little more elbow.
Okay. Thank you. Then we will move into the next item on the agenda, which is public comments and agenda requests. And this is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to make an agenda request, or to give a comment to the board, or anything, make a comment on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience? Yes.
Hi, I'm Kathy Ordman. I don't know if I need to stand up. I just wanted to let you know that in my environmental science class, I teach here at the high school. This summer, I took a class, and for a week, I was able to learn about all kinds of different water quality issues. And one of the things that my class is going to be doing is, we are going to be taking the Prairie River and doing a variety of monitorings, from chemistry, to looking at the little critters that live there, to habitat changes. And we're going to make some recommendations. There are other schools, from Tomahawk all the way down past Stevens Point, that are also taking part. So Wassa Schools, Everettstown, Stevens Point. And what's going to happen is, we're going to meet next spring at the university, and the students are going to present the data that they collected. And what we're going to look at is to see what are the influences to the river along each stop. I did get seven hundred dollars' worth of equipment I could purchase. I could pick up the equipment I needed, and I could purchase it for my classroom. So we are currently using that. Some of the chemical kits can be quite expensive. My question for you tonight is, there has been some discussion about having AP courses in the science area at the high school, so that we can further the variety of things that we teach. I have some concerns, given the declining enrollment, and given the budget concerns that we have, about being able to fund an AP program that is science-related. It will involve quite a lot of money, especially if you're looking at AP chemistry, or AP biology, in lab equipment costs, and the books, being able to meet the standards. And I'm just wondering how we can possibly do that, and if we can get the support, budgetary support needed. We also currently have many of our science staff, faculty members, teaching six hours right now. And if you're teaching an AP science course, it means not only one hour for lecture, it also often means an extra hour, or maybe even two, for lab. And how could we possibly fit more time in? And is there any possibility that in the future, more science staff are going to be added, so that we can seriously consider AP courses?
Thank you, Kathy. This isn't an opportunity that we would be able to directly answer your question at this evening. I would hope that as a group, maybe you're looking at putting some kind of proposal together that would give us numbers and ideas of what would be necessary to do one of the AP offerings.
Right.
There is on the agenda this evening, a discussion about AP economics.
Okay.
And we had one on AP psychology, so.
Okay. And we have been working with Mr. Durant in that. We're just hoping that, you know, the recommendations we're making are not frivolous and wishless. I think they are very serious. If this is something you really want, and want it to work, it will probably cost some money, and it will probably mean hiring you to the science area.
Appreciate you bringing this to my attention.
Can I ask, Kathy? Anyway, in your water sample test, you didn't give me an answer. Are you going to be looking for the zebra mussels?
We do sample macro bird rids. So what we do is, we have certain study sites, and we dig up any of the little critters that are down there. So if we do come across any zebra mussels, so far, we have it. If we do, we would definitely add that as part of our study.
Well, if they're doing this all the way down the river, I don't know how far down it's going as far as rapids, but Wisconsin rivers get filled up with zebra mussels.
Yep. And I don't know, every teacher could shape the proposal how they wanted to. I did include that in my proposal. Whether or not all the teachers did, I don't know. And there were teachers with different backgrounds. Some of them came with their chemistry classes, some came with biology. Biology would fit nicely. Chemistry, you'd probably do more of the chemical tests, so. I fortunately have the environmental science, so we can hit them off. So that's what we're doing.
Good luck in having fun.
Thanks. Yeah. Enjoying it. I'm up there. Hi.
Is there anyone else that has an agenda request? I would like to request four privileges to speak custom of the AP economics.
Sure.
Do I have a motion to grant four privileges to survive? Or AP now?
How do we make that motion?
Do I have a second question? Or in this second one? Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstained? Anyone else say?
I see Mr. Durant here remind me of something I was going to ask about. And once the first grading period is over, I'd be interested in seeing how our students have quite a few more progress this year, as far as the number of failed students in the first grading period. And give you some information on how we're going to truly use this year. Most two items have been issued over the last couple of years.
So what did you call down the grading? How great it's going to turn?
So a number of apps, declining enrollment, students that, I guess I would be curious to expand that, actually expand it a little bit, and some idea on what I was looking at as far as this, that it might be credibly efficient to make the greatest possibility of not graduating that night.
Well, first of all, I hope everybody is aware that this is the week of the high school play. What is it, taming the wild, wild west?
In address.
In address. I guess it's very different and interesting, so it'll be well worth for all of those to attend it, not only involved in the school, but our community people also. The other thing, though, is from the art department, I believe? Anyways, that's right, there's a lot of poems in here. And, you know, if you were just to read this and think, oh, my goodness, what's going through these young kids' minds? I looked through it, and I said, boy, these young kids have got a lot of strong possibilities for the future. Imagination goes a long way, and I really want to thank both departments for putting something like this together, getting the students to bring forth their best. And I know we had fun reading it on our family, and I wish it would be made available to the community. I don't know if it's in the libraries or not, or a copy of it.
I'm not sure if you do recognition to Kathy Whitner and Jim Richardson, Kathy from the art department, and Jim from the English department, and if we can find out about its availability. There is some cost, I suspect, to putting together mass quantities of that, so I don't, I'll ask the question.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, it said in the intro letter, following the two thousand and two documents conclusion, students were guests at TV Stat Library for a public presentation and reception of this work for the community. So we did already address that, and if the library doesn't have a copy, we'll make sure that they have it.
I guess that's what my question was, was a copy being left there?
Anyone else for comments and requests?
I've just got an article here I picked up off the internet regarding library medium programs, and how successful ones are, and I'd just like to pass it on to Frank. Maybe you could photocopy it, give copies to all the board members.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I didn't ask, actually, before we started, but if any of you had your November issue of the American School of March or, if I have a chance, well, I understand with you, but if you still haven't, there was an article in there that I wanted to reference, and I mentioned this before, but I already, so I want to borrow somebody's word, if we can, if possible, and take it.
So Ron, you're going to cover it. Anyone else, agenda requests or comments? Linda, if you wanted to, for President's Communications, I didn't have much of his time, other than my book, and Ron already gave great kudos to the people involved, so I'll put that on the side. And I did receive a letter from Gloria Harmonic, but I didn't have a chance to read it yet, but just came this afternoon, so I'll see what's included, what they'll address that in the next morning, make sure everyone gets a copy of it.
I just have a couple of things. I received an appointment seven hundred piece that all of you did as well, and we can read a few minutes later. In front of you, I put, as, the Department of Social Services, maybe you, the current past year's baby program, and some of the highlights. I just did a few of the pages, and decided this is the remainder of the report, and I was not quick to copy it. But if you would like to borrow this, and certainly maybe there's a lot of interesting commentary, there's, I don't know, seven hundred comments, and different statistical breakdowns that I think you might find interesting. Also in front of you is an invitation to the High School Veteran Day program on Monday, and this Friday morning, the school is having their Veterans Day Assembly, that's eight thirty?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, three fifteen, okay. These are eight thirty, we don't have any time. And I had included the agendas for the City of Maryland, which is the one that we have. That's all I have.
Does anybody else have anything to correspond to?
Yes, I received from Corals and Brady, I received mailings from them on their workshops. And this is a current happenings in school law, the School Law Breakfast Program, Tuesday, November twelfth, coming up fast. It's presented in Milwaukee, Madison, and Wassa, at the University of Wisconsin Marathon. It's a video conference. Briefly, topics of interest might include recent litigation, impact of No Child Left Behind Act, and I think that might be interesting to go to and hear, special ed discipline, IDEA reauthorization, and discuss due process hearing. Also, a myriad of recent legal issues, including discipline-related litigation, search and monitoring of students, for example, videotaping, and private school and student entitlements under NCLB. I'm just wondering if there's anyone either here or in administration that might, you know, might be worthwhile going.
It's next Tuesday?
Yes, it's coming up.
All day?
Seven AM to nine. Seven to nine.
Does it have a response?
The no charge to attend.
Does it have a response to you?
Oh, I don't see one. I'll give it to... Seven to nine, breakfast included, and no charge. We can even afford that one.
Well, let everybody think about that, maybe ask again this morning.
Sure.
Any others under the first line? Didn't that flip over, or did it go over business? And the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of the Act over twenty-third, forty eighty. We have Ron, Brenda, and Lynn, who are absent. We have a motion to approve the minutes in the Act over third, forty.
I would move to approve the minutes, tell me.
Do I have a second? Louise, are we seconded? Are there any corrections or additions? Discussion on the minutes. Linda, you vote to approve the minutes, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Anyone abstained?
Abstained.
We have one, Brenda. Next stand approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of claims and vouchers. Tom.
Madam President, and I were able to review the claims and vouchers tonight. Mr. Harrington answered all of my questions, and everything seemed in good shape. So I would move to approve claims and vouchers dated ten twenty-three oh two, through and including eleven six oh two.
Thank you. And we have Ron standing on that, so can you do the second round?
Will step for me.
Are there any other questions or discussion on vouchers? Tom, would you have a comment? None?
Well, we do get quite a bit of information by looking at those vouchers, and then even reading the coding on those vouchers. We do get some humor out of some of the abbreviated descriptions of.
Any other discussion? Unless we take a roll call vote for approval of the voucher. Kurt Ekis?
Aye.
Jerry Taylor?
Aye.
Brenda Mayner?
Aye.
Tom Muller?
Aye.
Jeff Peterson?
Aye.
Lee Schatz?
Aye.
Lynn Zander?
Aye.
Tom Bane?
Aye.
Ted Bird?
Aye.
Those vouchers seen approved. Next item is return and transportation, so I believe you have heard. And hiring, we got. Purchases and leases in accordance with policy procedure for return, one.
We have an item to consider, and I've asked Mr. Gell to come, and I included in the mailing two sheets, three pages, regarding our technology consultation services. I have all of the individual terms and implications for it, and I have those down in the minutes. But the synopsis is quite low on that third sheet. If you have had an opportunity to review the front and back of the first sheet, if you see the specifications that John and the team are looking for. And I put in my narrative, the recommendation that John and I agree on, you know, as to which of these services is approved, and I turn it over to John.
To...
Comment any fruit?
Oh, no.
Answer questions?
Yes, I'll answer questions if there are any. We essentially are recommending that we go with Office Solution, and it is the, if you look at the bid page, it would be the far right column, because that column actually shows that all of our consulting would be onsite. In the past, we have had a mixture of onsite and remote consulting. Their onsite consulting was less expensive than other people's remote, so that is why I'm recommending the far right column.
So we use it onsite, and even though it's listed sporadically in this column, every single date?
Correct. Yes.
Any other questions for John?
Did we use Office Solutions last year?
We used Goliath last year. We did use Office Solution on some problems we had, and that's why you saw probably some vouchers for them.
In terms of switching the prices, someone last night, she said these were all onsite. Are there any other issues, or are Office Solutions, if I could, better deal for us?
Frank and I discussed this for quite a while. There are always good reasons and not so good reasons. They are less expensive, is the key one, and the fact that they're onsite is very valuable to us. In the process, we will lose the consulting of the gentlemen who have worked with us for about five years, so all of their experience with Merrill is no longer available. I'm hoping that this works out for us, and we start gaining experience with this new firm, and some new people.
Totally. All of the individuals that had been with Goliath are not necessarily with them anymore, so, you know, there's a little bit of change over there as well. And that happens in the field of technology. Opportunity presents itself to these individuals. We see if they're only firms, or they go with a more positive economic opportunity for themselves.
John, what does one do to become a certified Microsoft engineer and these other ones? What does that mean?
It's a test you, MCSE, Microsoft Certified Software Engineer. There are many different software engineers in Microsoft. For example, you could get certified in Windows ninety-eight, you could be certified in Windows two thousand, Windows NT, Windows XP. You could also be certified in Windows, Microsoft Office. And what it amounts to is, you read a lot, you know, big books, you study them, and then you take tests, and you go to a specific site around the country, you pay a hundred dollars or something to take the test, you pass the test, you become certified.
That was my question. Do the Office Solutions and the people that will be coming onsite meet your qualifications of being Microsoft, Cisco, and Apple certified?
Yeah, and I apologize, that's not in there, because in their proposal, they did not list their certifications. They did send me an email afterwards. From Office Solutions specifically, we are looking at two different individuals, the PC person, the Microsoft person, and he is certified. I'm interested in someone certified in ninety-eight, NT, and two thousand, and possibly XP. I mean, and I hate to get getting too technical, there's four different certifications on the Microsoft side I'm very interested in, because we have three of those four operating systems. The person they're going to be using has at least three of those, and is working on four. And I think that's plenty to expect. The Netware person has what's called, and we can get into more of these, but the CCNA, the Cisco Certified Network, CCNE, Cisco Certified Network Engineer. And that is the key one for us, because all of our routers are Cisco routers in the district. And he's the person that helps us figure out why our network's not working, why people from, Kate can't get to the high school, and all that kind of good stuff. Going back to Tom's question, that's the tough one for me. The young man that we used in that area before had just a tremendous amount of knowledge, not only on Cisco, but also on Bay. He also knew Skyward, which is what we do a lot of our software in. So he was a tremendous help for us. And what we'll have to do is see if these new gentlemen can take over on some of those areas that Chris had been helping with.
I guess I'm still, I'm hearing PC, and I'm hearing network, what about the Apple support?
Okay, I'm sorry. The Apple, the two companies in Wassa are actually sub-jobbing the Apple Certified to Happy Mac in Wassa. The Happy Mac person does not have the latest certification from Apple.
Okay, so I'm hearing you say Office Solutions, price of thirty thousand will include the sub to Happy Mac.
Correct.
Okay. Now, before I finish, my only other question is, are we at all, do we have a plan and a timeline for some of our people to become mouse certified, or MCS certified? In terms of training? I know this stuff is available at tech, and I know the progression tests are there.
Right.
So.
We have a very strong interest to have our people in that, in those kind of certifications. We had a meeting just the other day on this, as to how can we convince our people to go out and do these things? And we are definitely looking at that. We are trying to look at ways to give them some incentives to go out and do that. Right now, there's nothing in the contracts that would require that.
Okay. Thank you.
From your perspective, and the issues that came to you, do you think that the money we spent last year for the Goliath consultation was well spent in terms of keeping systems operating and keeping the, keeping things going within the system?
We have a lot more needs than people, even with the consultants that we bring in. The consultants, what I've tried to use them in most cases for is, going back to Lynn's question here, when my two technicians don't have a clue as to why something's not working, their first response is supposed to be to call these consultants and get them on the phone. If you read that first page of the RFP, the Request for Proposal, I want to be able to reach those engineers, or have my technicians reach them essentially any time, and then they can always deduct the hours when my guys do it. The last thing I want my two technicians to be doing is sitting on the phone like you would, you or I would be if we used Gateway, for example, and you're on hold for an hour waiting for, and they're helpful. You know, those kinds of places are helpful, but it can, we could spend hours of just sitting there. So my real interest is to get that expertise to my technicians as quickly as possible. We have more problems than even the consulting time allows us. And I shouldn't say problems, we just have a huge technology investment here. And I was very happy with who we were using. The fact that we went to Office Solution has nothing to do with the fact of the technicians, or the, excuse me, the engineers we were using.
General, the consultation was absolutely essential, what you're saying, basically, to keep things moving.
Right. Yes. For example, one of the things we're trying to implement on the Windows side is creating what are called ghost images, where we have a whole lab, if they all have the same stuff on it, we will make an image and try to, and this is one of our engineer, or one of the engineers recommended that we try this, and taught my technician how to do some of it. We're going to, we still need more work on it, but, you know, it's those kinds of things. Had just a real weird problem with our network not too long ago from Kate Elementary, and I had to call the other technician, or the other engineer, because I didn't have a clue as to how to go about solving it.
I guess I'm just wondering if we're paying a consultant thirty thousand for three hundred and sixty hours, if it would be cost-effective to have our own person?
The, if you look at the cost, they range there, I think, from about ninety-five an hour to about a hundred and twenty an hour, if you do the math on them. And the, actually, the Apple person is less expensive than that per hour. But we, as I mentioned before, we just had a meeting with Lynn's concern, and at the same meeting, we were discussing that. Are we in a position where we wish to do something like that? I think the board will be seeing, at some point, a recommendation from the Technology Leadership Committee as to how to handle some of these issues? If I may say that, Pat? Because I know we've been talking about it there.
I believe that CISA offers some technology support.
I don't believe our CISA does. They don't have a strong technology group up here. The CISA on the west side, Frank, five is it, is very strong, and has that kind of support, the one in Chipotle Falls. And very good, but ours does not have that.
Maybe what I was thinking is that they were, they were looking at doing buying, is it?
Yes.
Oh, I've heard something from our CISA regarding technology, and looking at.
A few years ago, CISA and I had a technician, the technicians of those, we talked for twenty-two years, school district, it became an impossible circumstance, and the whole thing fell apart that way. We got another job, and we decided to try to pursue it, or possibly.
Right, so I'm seeing that that might be an alternative for us as well, for other districts that have similar situations, like we are, that, you know, could be an opportunity of high-grade services to CISA.
If I may just, oh, go on, sorry, go ahead.
With regard to other districts, do you know if in our area, do most districts have a consultant like this?
I can tell you, for example, Tomahawk, because I just talked with their director not too long ago, and she used the same gentleman that we had been using. And, because we both felt this, Chris was very good. So, yes, I know she uses it. So, yes, I know she uses it. I can tell you that DC Everest and Antigo have gone into a partnership on sharing one of these engineers. And this was, I had even tried to get some of that time a few years ago, but that all fell through for the Merrill side. Wausau has their own, I believe. I believe they have one of their own. But again, at the Ad hoc Technology Committee, I brought a friend of mine over from Claire and they were talking, he was talking about what they have for technical support and it's just awesome. You know, they have several of these Microsoft certified engineers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
I think one of the issues, because our needs are very Microsoft engineer, the Cisco person, the Apple person, having one person on staff with all of those certifications, that person would probably be pretty expensive.
If I may go back, two things, I already forgot one of them. The reason the Apple person has been less important to me as far as being certified is because of the strong Apple background we tend to have in this district. And I didn't feel the Apple certified person would help us much. And I really don't think we'll be calling that person in often because I think, I think we have those skills on that side. But the other issue that I wanted to mention before about hiring on these people, the teach monies that we are receiving right now, which help put us into this problem because we can spend teach monies on equipment, but we can't spend it on personnel. I, I know there's a fair amount of discussion amongst people at the state level to change the teach formula slightly where we can start buying some of these services out of that money. So that will, it won't help us in reducing the cost, but at least we could shift the cost over to teach, or at least part of which.
I was gonna say, the math is pretty easy on this. Thirty thousand dollars times forty-five days, half a year, ninety days, half a school, sixty thousand.
And this contract that everyone with Alliance just expired, that expired as of first of November?
Correct. I do this intentionally. I, I always like to get us through the start of the school year with our consultants because that is the busiest time for us. When everyone comes back and all of a sudden, nobody's computer seems to work. So I like to keep, I like to move that to about November one.
I will move, I will accept the proposal from Office Solutions, by Technology Services, for a thirty thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
On second, then?
Anything for the decision, John?
I think it's been laid out pretty good. Obviously, we need to get something that's affordable for our staff and, I think, the senior staff is for the time being.
John, would this, or the engineers would then threw you up to take care of other situations with our technology?
It, it does. Remember, we've been using these folks every year, though, and about the same amount of time. If you look at the way I structure that, it essentially says every Friday, they come in and help us. But in fact, we call them anytime during the week and they subtract hours from Friday. But you'll notice there are a couple places where I group three Friday, or three days together so that beginning of the school year, we get them here a little more often. It does, this absolutely helps me, yes.
Okay, good. Question, I guess, for Mr. Harrington, Pat's not here. Do we have money specifically allocated in the budget about this amount as a service and services? So we have to do this every year? We know where it's coming from?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I just have a question. When I'm looking at these proposals, I see that A includes travel and B does not, but what about the one that we're, have the motion on? What about travel?
There are no travel costs. That is the total cost. Thank you.
That is included.
That is total, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions?
So this, perhaps, looking towards a full-time, or sharing a full-time employee is something that the Ad hoc Technology Committee has dealt consistently? I just think it's a good way to go down the road.
I think just the Leadership Technology Committee is looking at the demands of all of our technology in the district and it is overwhelming for the staff that we have right now as evidence to buy lots of issues that are out there that aren't able to be resolved in a timely manner, which is what the committee's needing. So I think this is one of the solutions that we're looking at.
And even before the LPC, and our committee, as John said, you know, has tried to make inroads in the joint venture with Antigo and DC Everest, and we've looked at other possibilities before that, but financially it becomes really difficult to do much more.
If I may, Pat, on that issue, I did ask our, the MCSE that we had before, I said, you know, if I wanted to hire you full-time, what would I have to pay you a year? And he said, oh, I'd come for about seventy thousand a year. So that makes it a little tough to get one full-time. The supply and demand in that area right now is such that they can't demand those kinds of salaries for a certification.
So when you tell your kids what to do when they go to college?
These are not even, these are not colleges, yeah.
When will we be hearing from the Technology Committee? When will we have a report from them so that we know, you know, how things are going? That would be great.
I think their utmost priority at the moment is trying to get through the technology plan and they've spent a half a day working on that already. Got through half the plan, need to finish up the other half plan. We've had to postpone that day. And as you may recall, John mentioning that plan ties lots of funding and grant money to the district. And we're already a little late, so we need to get moving in it. So right now, the priorities have been to work with John and finish that plan. And I think once that, once that's done, a lot of other issues and reports will be there.
Okay.
Saying none, and we will vote on the motion to accept the Office Solutions deal in the amount of thirty thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Sue, could we do a conference?
Carrie Taylor?
Aye.
Donda Mayner?
Aye.
Tom Muller?
Aye.
Jeff Peterson?
Aye.
Lenny Schatz?
Aye.
Ms. Zander?
Aye.
Ms. Dang?
Aye.
Kirk Echus?
Aye.
Edward?
Aye.
Thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
Miss Mayner on the agenda, this is second read of the Procedure 6451, High School Middle School grading teachers. It's a discussion that the last committee indicated that the committee wishes to remove the middle school from that policy. Kirk, can you give a quick summary?
It's basically coming back as a second read with no changes from the first read. I know there were some questions at the board level about what we're gonna do with the middle school grading policy. And I guess we're gonna remain status quo for right now, but we will be coming forward with the policy regarding the middle school grading.
For your curiosity, the Policy Care Committee requested that I contact Teleline and DC Everest as examples. And I did that. DC Everest does not have a policy that deals with middle school grading, grade point average, awards, anything. And Teleline has something, and it's been put in the mail, so I didn't get that by the end.
My only concern is that it feels like we're out a little ahead of ourselves, that we're taking a policy and then there's no existing policy. I guess I would, I would feel way more comfortable if we were grounded with something. And I guess my question is, what is status quo? I read, I read the narrative and it seemed to me that the associate principal wanted to go back to, wanted to use the plus and minus that actually had a different numerical that, that they have been operating under, even though it hasn't been the policy. But does status quo mean what is in the current policy? I'm confused on that. So what does status quo mean? And can something really operate without a policy? When we are grounding ourselves in policy?
We do not have a policy that relates to grading for the elementary schools.
I appreciate that, but that's not what we're talking about.
Well, actually, it is. You're just saying, is there something we're operating under that we don't have a policy?
Okay, but then...
Fall back grades in the elementary schools without a policy.
Okay, okay. But what does status quo mean then, Frank?
Well, status quo means what has been currently in practice.
Even though it is against the current policy?
Right. Now, I would clarify that, saying that, that Mr. Mickey has conveyed to me, and I think at the last board meeting, that they can, without difficulty, use a four-point system.
Which I understand they should have been doing the first quarter, correct?
I think, yes.
Great. So that's what they're operating under now, first quarter, four-point O, what our current policy states?
Correct.
Okay. Then I guess my question to the committee is, is, we're just striking the word middle school.
Yes.
So what are they gonna do while they're researching a new policy? They're going to use what they're currently using?
But what they're currently using is, is four-three-two-one.
Correct.
So the status quo is...
Four-three-two-one.
Four-three-two-one.
Which is what the policy books state. Okay, and when might we expect this new policy? Anybody?
Yeah, we talked about before the semester, we're gonna try to put something together. But now, there's two other factors that are tied to this. One is the awards policy that has the silver award being given to students that have a grade point average of such to such, the gold to such and such, and the bronze to such and such. So there's a grade point average. And we were talking at the committee level the other night about other ways of being able to award medals without using their value. For the, for the gold, you could say they have to have straight A's. For the silver, it could be some combination of these and other grades and so on. So that could be done. And the third complicating factor, the second complicating factor, is the policy on student promotion of eighth grade to ninth grade, which is a state mandated piece that can be contrived in a variety of ways. And currently, we use as one of the components, a grade point average. Students have to have a grade point average of one point six-six-seven or greater or to be considered for promotion. Eighth grade to ninth grade, but if they don't have that grade point, there are other factors that they can fall back on, teacher recommendations, four out of five, or five out of five of the KCP test areas in the proficient level and so on.
Well, I just would say that I'm real excited about seeing a new policy. I really am. And I think there is a dear, a clear difference between middle school and where we're heading with, with the new grading policies and tracks in grade school and how that will integrate with middle school. So I'm excited about it. But we don't have it yet. And I think we have an opportunity to research it, research it well, ground us in all the policies that relate to it and where the state is heading. So I, at this point, am uncomfortable striking it until we have something to replace it. That's just how I feel. I'm, I'm, I think we can live with it this year and it'll give us a golden opportunity not to rush it for second semester. I don't see why we would ever chain horses in the middle of the Prairie River middle, Prairie River stream while, while we have the opportunity and time to develop real good, clear policies tied to all our state things. And actually tied to what I'm seeing are some philosophical changes in how we do awards. So I'm totally comfortable with status quo as it's in our policy book until we have a wonderful, up-to-date, solid replacement.
I guess not. I, I just showed Lynn some of the policies regarding academic awards and the eighth grade promotion that it does have, you know, it's related to a grade point average. I guess we as a committee are trying to decide whether or not we keep the academic awards. If we keep a GPA at the middle school, it would be easier to keep the academic awards proposal. And I guess that's part of the philosophical thing that, that we've got to muddle through.
My understanding from what you just said is that if, in fact, we adopt this and middle school is not part of this procedure anymore, it goes back to a status quo, which is really the same as, as they're doing now?
Our current status quo is the four-point system.
Okay. Now, a couple weeks ago, when Mr. Mickey was here, it was my understanding they were actually wishing to go back to what they did last year and proposed this to get them out of this procedure so they could do what they did last year. But you're saying that would not happen?
I believe that there is strong sentiment on the part of a large number of middle school staff members to use that twelve-point system. There are, there's a few objections to that. However, they are using and do have the ability to use in the grading analysis in the end, a four-point system, which has been done so far this year.
So if we go to the current status quo, whether we pass this or don't pass this, it won't make any difference to what they're doing?
Correct.
Okay.
I still don't understand what to say.
What are we doing?
No. Do you want an answer to that question?
Yes, I guess.
First of all, I think it would be prudent of us to, to dissect that policy because most, not all, but most of the policies that we have related to levels in our district are for those levels. They're either for everybody or the, or the high school or the middle school or the elementary school. Our promotion policy, you know, is set up in that fashion. And I think there's some laws that have been doing that. The issue with the high school is a little bit different because the grade point average does make a difference in terms of college entrance and arriving of other features. At the middle school, relative to those high-stake kinds of issues, the grade point average really doesn't make a difference. So I, for me, that's a reason of separating these into two policies and then defining what we want to do with the middle school and the high school.
So I'm not sure the advantage of, sort of, doing away with the middle school policy at this point or waiting, as Lynn, I think, is requesting, kind of keep a policy related to that since they're doing the same thing anyway until we have that new one developed and can then implement it at that time and then take the middle school out of this, out of this procedure.
Anything else?
No.
I also agree. I have no problem with the concept of separating the middle school from the high school. And if the middle school wants to come back with a comprehensive policy that will address the awards and the promotion issues, I think that's how it should be presented. And I also think when they go back to studying and coming up with a proposal, they should reread Policy Procedure 8310, which, which, which says that assistance for policy development will be sought from all sources, formal and informal. And I would hope they would look for some input from students and parents in the community as well as the teachers.
Well, I, I did not have a chance to attend the policy committee as far as Mr. Mickey was at, but he has made it very clear that the intention of the middle school is to be able to use the policy based on the twelve-point staff system. And I, I would disagree with Mr. Harrington's interpretation. I think when Mr. Mickey was talking about returning to the status quo, he was talking about returning to the twelve-point system. And I support their ability to do that. Teachers, the majority of them want to use that and they don't know why we, as board members, should sit here and say, we don't think that that's effective to use. They're the professionals on the teaching and grading. We are not, I guess, something that would bring the shots. So I, I would encourage us to go ahead and allow them to reread the way they like to do it, since I don't see any harm in doing it that way. And I would hope that some of the board members who have a problem with the fact that the policy does change, but in a proper procedure, won't let that override other issues that other business were going ahead and making the conversation.
I looked at it a little bit differently. I thought that when the original policy was written, they took it the easy way out and threw in the middle school. And right now, with the new state standards coming along, we're taking the hard road and trying to find a better solution. And one of them is separating the high school grading and awards and so forth. So I think we're, we're on the right road. Have no doubt in my, Jeff says... So I think we're, we're on the right road, uh, having no doubt, and like Jeff says, the grading professionals in our district are the ones that, uh, are one of the areas that we look for, for advice also. I'm in favor of, of passing this, uh, motion tonight, to, to separate the junior highs, so that we will develop a separate program for them. I meant them. Yeah, shame on you. As far as, as changing back to the system that they were using initially, I think it would, I would rather that we waited until we had a total package all decided, wait for them to come to us with a total package of what's gonna happen with the grades, the awards, the eighth grade promotion, um, 'cause they just changed to the four-point, and then maybe we'll go to the twelve-point, and then maybe when we finally decide what we're gonna do, it'll be something different. So, um, I think they've made one change, let's wait until we are, until we're sure what we really want to do before they change again.
Ken, I think you've got into one of the points that I've commented on before, with the, uh, no child left behind, and the state WKCE performance test that have a four-point scale, basically advanced, uh, proficient, basic and minimal. And with the Republican Party fully in control of Washington now, that's not going to change. And in fact, it'll probably become stronger, which is one of the expectations. So I think that as the middle school goes through this process of thinking about how grading relative to reporting to parents, and how we deal with awards or promotions or whatever, that's going to be a factor as well, because that, that's going to come along. And the high school is going to have to think about that also. So, all of this is gonna have to be worked through, and, and maybe you're right, maybe we should just pause on this for a year, where middle school did use ten years to four-point system, um, and, and see what's going to happen at the state and federal level relative to those laws and statutes regarding student performance, because that might direct more of our energy.
This is up for a second read, coming from committee, it requires no second. Is there any further discussion, or are we ready to vote to accept this policy change on the second read? Are you voting on accepting the policy change of removing middle school from policy, from Procedure sixty-four fifty-one? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Those, sorry? Nay. Those abstained? We have two nays, Lynn and Brenda, is that correct? Thank you. That motion carries? Has been changed. Moving on to item G, consider social studies AP course proposed. Yes, I'm sorry, Lynn, question?
Is there some question on this vote?
Would you, would you like a re-vote?
I think I would. Would you say the motion again? I think there's some confusion.
Okay, maybe I re-spoke. I believe the motion was the second reading approving the Procedure sixty-four fifty-one as amended with middle school being removed from the procedure.
So then I voted the way I wanted to vote.
So an aye vote would be, and-
Supporting the removal.
If there was some confusion, we can retake, we can, we'll do a, we'll do a vol call vote, and make sure everyone is comfortable with the vote.
Can we clarify that middle school will continue on the grading procedure they use this current semester?
Yeah, that's not clear.
I will.
So you, okay, so what I'm hearing, if I can slide the floor, what I'm hearing is, this has been passed, middle school, the word middle school has been struck from Procedure sixty-four fifty-one, however, the middle school will operate on a four, straight four-point with no steps involved. That's what I'm hearing.
Relative to a GPA, they'll still be allowed to use pluses and minuses as the high school does for grading and the like, but not to deal with a GPA, like the high school does.
So you're talking about a compilation issue? Things are being compiled with, with the GPA?
I, okay, whatever, I, I obviously-
This relates to the GPA, and the policy relates to the GPA. And in the policy, you said that a high school and middle school could use pluses and minuses for regular grading, they could be on the report card for quarter grade, but they would not be used in compiling the GPA.
And they would have no numerical significance, is what, they have no numerical significance? Okay.
Or the GPA.
For improvement impetus, that they will have no bearing on the GPA? No numerical value?
Or the GPA.
Okay?
Is everyone comfortable when they voted that? Do I have two nays on it, Brenda, or do you wish to?
That, being the, the first year of both eight-